Nine o'clock, we're gonna try and get started here on time. Today is the next step in the city council's process for filling the vacant District Four council seat. Five candidates have been invited to participate in interviews today. After today's interviews, the final step will be to elect one of the five candidates as the council member representing District Four for the remainder of the term. That election will be part of the council's regular agenda this Tuesday, September 12th. The new council member will assume office on September 29th. We'll use a structured interview process today. With the structured interview, the council will ask each candidate an identical set of questions, each candidate an identical set of questions. This gives the candidates equal opportunities to provide information, and it gives the council the opportunity to evaluate the candidates' responses to those identical questions. Also, because it is a structured interview, council members will not be able to customize questions or ask any follow-up questions at this time. While this does eliminate some back-and-forth dialogue over the interviews, it is essential to ensure that the candidates respond to all the same questions. The interview will include eight questions and be limited to 30 minutes, and we'll stick strictly to that timeframe. The order of the interviews was determined by a random drawing this morning. Our first interview this morning will be with Gary Garnant, followed by Ron Hug, Terry Blackburn, Eric Sevignan, and concluding with Rebecca Beriantos-Patlin. So now I'll ask staff if they can bring in Mr. Garnant, and we'll begin the interview process. Morning. Welcome, Mr. Garnant. We appreciate you being here today to interview for the District Four council seat. I'll give you a little idea about how we're gonna conduct today's interview, which I think you've already been, it's already been presented to you, but just as a reminder, we're using a structured interview process today. With the structured interview, the council will ask each candidate an identical set of questions. Council members will only ask questions from the structured conversational nature of some interviews, but this approach ensures consistency in the interview and ensures each candidate responds to the same set of questions. The interview consists of eight questions that have been provided to candidates ahead of time. It is a timed interview, so it'll be limited to 30 minutes, and we'll stick strictly to that timeframe, but I believe you'll find this an adequate amount of time to answer the questions. So if you're ready to proceed, I'll begin with the first question. All right, great. And the first question is my question to get things started, and that is, I'd like you to describe your familiarity, involvement, and/or support of some of the major and city-involved projects in District Four, along with some of the projects being funded at the state level.
First of all, the, I think I should say that I do support the capital improvement projects that are happening in District Four, especially with the infrastructure, street repair, ADA ramp installation, curb replacement, all of those desperately needed. As far as our, one of our favorite places in South Omaha, the Mo River Wastewater Treatment Plant, it has its troubles at times, so it's constantly in repair, in improvement stages, and they consume a different type of funding, both from local, state, and federal. And moving westward, the projects that I know about presently, 42nd and D Street, C to D Bridge Replacement, that has a mixture of funding attached to that. In various stages of planning and design, 72nd D Bridge, 38th and L, 72nd and L Street, all those are in different stages within that framework, and different buckets of money coming in to pay for those. Timeframes range from now up until, I believe, 2029, if my information is correct. I have, I guess I'm an avid park supporter, if you will, have a passion for kids that and families that like to go out and recreate, and we should be able to provide them a good place to do that, and I think South Omaha has their fair share. When I served before, we were able to do a renovation of 16, all 16 parks in District Four, and the Parks Department's plan at that time was to review every park every 15 to 16 years, so I'm sure that they're probably in that process now, and hopefully some District Four's parks are in that rotation. Just a couple examples of state funding to currently the Miguel Keith Memorial Park down on 30th and Y Street is getting the South Omaha Historical Grant funding and presently using that. They have their report coming up September, or October, or November of this year. And in various stages of planning and design, Hitchcock Pool Park Area, Albright Park have at, I think they're in the design stage now for some improvements there. I'd like to think that, along with the projects that are funded at the state level, that we look at other avenues. Just as an example, I mentioned when I was talking about the bridges, there's the funds that are funneled to the state, it's called the Bridge Buyback Program, or Bridge Buyback Fund, that I would certainly make it a goal to utilize those funds more than what we are now according to the Capital Improvement Program. So with that, I would end in saying that I also think that an additional helicopter for the police air unit is a must, not just for District Four, but citywide, because I can tell you from experience, that piece of equipment is a force multiplier. And right now, with being about 90 officers short in public safety on the police side, that would certainly be an investment long-term.
Thank you. Next question will be asked by Councilmember Milton.
Yes, as a council member, there are considerable demands on your time. You will receive numerous invitations to neighborhood meetings and other events, often on nights and weekends, as well as full days of council business on Tuesdays. Please discuss how you would balance these demands with your personal and professional life while still being responsive to your constituents.
Well, there's a line in a country music song that goes, "My dog's gone, my truck's gone, my girlfriend's gone, bottom line, I got the time." And that's kind of where it's been for me. My, my family is gone, I have one brother left out in Utah. I have proven that I can overcome the challenges of the time responsibility. I've done that over and over during my first tenure in this chamber, and outside of this chamber as well. So it would be not a problem for me to attend meetings that are outside of this facility, get back into contact with the Alliance, the various neighborhood associations that are in District Four, and making sure that that conduit that I established back my first go-around is still intact, and repair anything that might need to be rejuvenated.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Gary, thank you for taking time out of your schedule today to interview for this important position that we have in front of us.
Thank you.
Could you please provide a situation where you apply the following concepts: diversity, equity, and inclusion? And then after that, would you share the outcomes of that situation?
The District Four is definitely diverse. I mean, we have Sudanese, Latinos, Somalis, Asians, just to name a few. We have a melting pot, if you will. Even the American Legion Post is titled that, as the melting pot of South Omaha. I've been fortunate to bring some focus groups together when I was campaigning back in the early 2000s that were diverse, and helped with what folks thought at first was going to be a language barrier, and it turned out that it wasn't. We found a way to communicate. Might have taken a little bit longer, but we found a way to communicate, and contrary to what you might hear today, we got things done. Now, does that mean government stops after you finish the project? Absolutely not. It's fluid, it's ongoing, there's gonna be changes, there's gonna be ups, there's gonna be downs. I kind of refer to it as a cardiac line. We have some good times, we have some bad times, and back and forth. You have to remain available for all of those, that effect, but we also have to keep in mind that this is the legislative body of government, not the day-to-day operation side on the administrative branch of government. We legislate. I have a lady that was in my ear for 16 years, and whatever went wrong in her life, she wanted an ordinance written. My husband's lazy, he won't get off the couch and cut the grass. I can't legislate him off the couch. That sounds like a therapy problem to me. But I was able to use a wide variety of individuals that live in Omaha to come down and help with making sure that I was doing what I needed to be doing. These concepts, diversity, equity, and inclusion, I guess I could sum up quite simply that we should be able to address each one of these fairly when writing city policy. That's how I would see it. I would, could it be a little more complicated than that when you get into the legalese part of it? Yes. But remember, and all of you do, that you have a law department, you have a Human Rights and Relations Department, and I guess we should keep in mind now that we have this artificial intelligence thing going around the country now. How are we going to address that as well? So I would be acceptance to the challenge on any of these, but we have to keep in mind that we shouldn't step out of our legislative side and try to be on the operations side. That's, that's the two distinctive things that we should keep in mind here today, and as we go on in whoever you select. So then, to give you the outcome of the groups that I was able to bring together was, one would be, we're still in communicating. Two, one of the individuals, a young Latino girl, well, woman now, got into politics, and she was able to start, moved to New York City and was able to start two nonprofits there. And she accredits that mentoringship that I gave her this opportunity to do something that she really loves. So I think that wasn't just an outcome here in Omaha, it made it all the way to the East Coast, if you will. But I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Begley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Good morning, Mr. Garnant.
Good morning.
Considering the issues that can be influenced by city government, what do you believe are the most important current and future issues in District Four and the city as a whole?
In District Four, I would say housing, public safety, and transportation. And I would actually go as far as saying I would rank those in that order as well. Housing, public safety, and transportation. As a city as a whole, property taxes, infrastructure, and public safety. Depending upon who you ask, and at the time of the year, I would think those, under the umbrella of city as a whole, fluctuate a little bit, kind of pass over one another, again, depending upon who you ask. That would be my response.
Mr. Rowe.
As a council member, you would represent District Four, but your votes would affect all citizens of Omaha. Describe how you would balance effectively representing District Four constituents and contributing to policy decisions that affect all Omahans.
Well, all of you right now have experienced, and will continue to experience, that weighted balance is not easy to count by, and it takes quite a learning curve to get to a point where you're comfortable with how you approach each and every issue. I, myself, used the three Rs. Reach, research, and rely. I would reach out to the 50 or so listening posts that I had established during my first tenure here and get feedback. Second, then I would rely on the research that I was able to do, based upon the resources that were available to me, and get resources from staff that are available to them and get feedback from them. And then I would rely on my colleagues, their experience, their concerns, their feedback. Then put that all together, plus a little bit of South Omaha common sense, I'd make a decision on which way to vote. But it's not something that you take lightly, it's not, as one of my constituents thinks, you're not a willy-nilly guy, Gary. I try to take pride in that and everything, because this is important stuff, you know? We can, it was like when I was in law enforcement, you know? We had the power to take the freedom away from individuals, and what we do here causes that domino effect of maybe not taking their freedom away. Well, some people think that, that that will happen on some of the things that we do, but good governing, you do your best not to put, at least I tried during my time here back in the early 2000s, the the sacrifice one would have to make would be, I, it's sort of hard for me to put it in words, because I'm kind of an emotional type of guy. I had to, early on in my military career, in my police career, we had to suppress our emotions, and after I retired, I've cried so much in my therapy, and to see what's happened and why we're here today is what drew me, the gravity of that drew me back in. I think I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Just a time check for everyone, we're doing well, I think. We have about 11 or 12 minutes left with about three more questions. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thanks for being here, Mr. Garnant. Two key council member roles are assisting individual constituents with resolving problems and collaborating with neighborhood associations and other district constituencies to resolve those, their concerns. Please describe how you would, one, approach assisting constituents with concerns and problems, and then, secondly, how you would effectively engage with neighborhood associations and other district groups to address those issues.
Certainly. On my desk, I had a worksheet, and if I'd get a call or a visitor, I'd pull that worksheet out, and the constituent would state their concern, and there was a sizable percentage that found out that they actually didn't have a problem, they just wanted an opportunity to vent, and I'd let them. And I'd always ask them at the end, "How do you feel now?" "Pretty good, thanks for your time." But those that were here, and we found that there was a problem, they had a deep concern about something, and they wanted to get to it before it became a major problem. What I would do, the first thing that I would ask them, "What have you done to solve your problem?" And if the answer was, "Well, nothing," first thing that I would do is I would get them in contact with the current measure that's in place on the Where to Call list. That's a three-page document that's on the city website, and that's where, I would say, 88 to about 92% of the nuisance complaints can be resolved, whether you have a cracked sidewalk, or there's a neighbor that parks their car on the lawn in front of their house, or there's a vacant lot full of trash, whatever that might be, it's on that list, call it, and then that will activate the measure that's already in place to take care of that problem. If they say, if a constituent tells me, "Well, I've done all of that, and I've done this, and I've done that," all right, well, now you have, as a council member, two problems. You have the problem that they brought to you, and you have a problem with a system failure, because nothing works for this constituent. So you work towards the resolution on the problem that they brought to you. You get that solved, then you pick up the charge on finding out why the system failed when that person activated the measures that were already in place to take care of that problem. And then when that is resolved, you get back to your constituent and say, "This is what happened, this is the repair that we put into place, don't hesitate to call again if you have a concern." And then your second part of your question was the engaging with the neighborhood associations and other district groups. The best way that I found out to do this is go right to the source. You go to their turf, go to their meetings, and find out what their issues are. Or if they just want an opportunity to vent, they get to vent on their turf, as opposed to coming down, paying for parking, coming in the city hall, having to go through the search system, coming up to the office, you know, a little bit of intimidation, I think. You're on their turf, and that's what I found out, because it's very, yes, is it very time-consuming? Absolutely. This is a full-time job for part-time pay. I found that out shortly after my first oath, my second oath, my third oath, and my fourth oath, and I don't think that that's changed today. I would be remiss if I didn't say that, if given the opportunity, I am prepared, I am willing, and I'm ready for a repeat performance.
Thank you. Two more questions. The next question is, each week's city council agenda contains dozens of items the councils, the council must consider. How would you prepare yourself to make well-informed votes on each agenda item?
That depends on the size of the agenda, for one thing, because you can average from 30 all the way up to 80 or 90 agenda items. At least, that's what I experienced during my time here. What I would normally do is that, look at each item, and I believe I mentioned in answering question number three, I'd ask two questions. One, how does it affect District Four? And two, how does it affect the city as a whole? And come up with that weighted balance for each one of those agenda items. And you don't need me to sit here and remind you, you get your, your agenda Thursday afternoon, and then you have Friday for research with the help of the staff, and then you're kind of on your own on Saturday and Sunday to do your research, and then you come back Monday, and then you have staff available to help on Monday. So that, again, that time, it's meant, that we've mentioned twice earlier here already today, is very consuming. So you have to use your time wisely, set up a plan. I mentioned earlier my, the three Rs that I go through for each and every agenda item. And say, for instance, Councilmember Begley may have an issue in District Three, and he'll want to come over and talk to his colleagues in regards to, would I have an open door to that? Absolutely. Communicating amongst one another, I think, is very, very important. So using all of those things that forementioned in the other couple of questions, and how I look at it, depending upon the size of the agenda, it can be daunting, or you could have a day where it can be daunting, or you could have a day where a very short agenda, you could be here for hours. There could be one hot topic, and you'll be kind of but I'm ready for that challenge.
Thank you. We have about three or four minutes left, and the last question is from Councilmember Milton.
Thanks, Mr. Gannan, in closing. Please discuss why you would be an effective council member representing District Four?
In the sixteen years that I served previously, the help that I was able to provide, the conduit that I was able to set between District Four and City Hall, I believe that institutional knowledge and targeted experience should be at least to the forefront here when you make your decision. I was able to adopt sixteen budgets. And I could probably go on, but you have that in my, in my resume. You can read it at your leisure. But I feel that the targeted experience, and by that I mean individual situations that have come up within the district. And there is a legislative side to it. I can honestly say I was there. I did what I could. And I made sure that my colleagues were aware of the actions that were taken. And I requested the help from my colleagues at that time for a wide variety of, of issues. And you do the same today, minus one. I believe I have the, the capabilities, still have the energy. I'm just a little grayer, a little more, a few more wrinkles. And I might not be as fast as I was at twenty-seven, now at seventy-seven. But I still have a capital C for care for District Four and our city. So I would ask this body for your consideration as your appointee to District Four and allow me to show you what a fifth oath can do.
Thank you. We appreciate your responses and your interest in the city council. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
I'll now ask city council staff to bring in Mr. Hug. Welcome.
Morning.
Morning.
Just for clarification, it's Hug.
Welcome, Mr. Hug. We appreciate you being here today to interview for the District Four council seat. Here's how we want to conduct today's interview that I know you're apprised of, but I'll just repeat before we get started. We're using a structured interview process today. With the structured interview, the council will ask each candidate identical set of questions. Council members will only ask questions from the structured interview and will not be able to ask any follow-up questions. So you won't have the ability to have a conversation or have it be conversational in nature at this time. But this approach ensures consistency in the interview and ensures each candidate responds to the same set of questions. The interview consists of eight questions, and it is a timed interview. So you'll be limited, limited to thirty minutes, and we'll stick strictly to that thirty minutes. But I believe you'll find that to be adequate amount of time to rest the questions you've been given. So if you're ready to proceed, I'll begin with the first question. You're welcome to have a seat. And I'll start with the first question, which is to describe your familiarity, involvement, and/or support for some of the major city-involved projects in District Four, along with projects being funded at the state level.
You don't have to go very far in District Four to see some street projects going on, whether it's resurfacing with asphalt or a total tear-out and new concrete like they're doing on Grover Street between Fiftieth and Sixtieth. They just finished street renovation from Grove, from Forty-Second Street East, which is basically where Grover goes into Fenton in front of Jefferson High School. You know, most everything I see is street in nature. The Forty-Second Street Bridge, just south of the interstate, they took out two bridges. And between those two bridges, there was a little land bank there, and, you know, they excavated that land bank. They're putting in one huge big bridge. If you go up Q Street, you'll see two recent roundabouts at Forty-Second Street. That immensely improved the traffic flow and safety of what's probably one of the worst intersections in, in the city. And there's also a proposed roundabout going into Forty-Eighth and Q, which is going to be interesting because it's got the cemetery right there, which is elevated above the street level. So I'm kind of interested to see how that all finishes out. But probably the biggest project going on right now would be the Q Street development between Seventy-Second and Sixtieth Street in front of the proposed casino, where they're updating the infrastructure. And I would imagine there's state dollars involved there, as well as I, I would imagine that bridge project on Forty-Second Street probably has some state dollars too. And you drive around, you look at the city parks in, in District Four, you see a lot of new equipment. Christie Heights Ball Field was just renovated. And oh, the new fire station at Thirty-Fifth and Q Street.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Milton?
Thanks. Mr. Hug, as a council member, there are considerable demands of your time. You will receive numerous invitations to neighborhood meetings and other events, often on nights and weekends, as well as full days of council business on Tuesdays. If you could, please discuss how you would balance these demands with your personal and professional life while still being responsive to your constituents?
Thank you. Being currently an elected official for twenty-some years, I'm familiar with commitment. That's part of what you take on when you get elected to any position. You are expected to be accessible by your constituents. And quite frankly, that's the part of the job that I really like. I like going to the fish fries and the church dinners and the festivals, being in the public. I spent a number of years on neighborhood organizations. And as part of that, I would go to other neighborhood group meetings. And I love going to those meetings, meeting people and learning what their concerns on and, and how their views are. So you, you just have to make that commitment. And there is a time management aspect to it. There are going to be events you would like to go to, but you can't because there's other commitments. So you have to kind of weigh that out. And, but you have to be respectful to people. You know, if somebody asks you to come, and you say, hey, I can't come this weekend, but you know what? What would be a next opportunity that I could come and, and talk? Personally, my own time management, I, I do own a small business. And if I was successful, I've made arrangements, I'd be bringing on a full-time manager to basically take over the operations of my business.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hug, for coming in today and imparting your knowledge with us as we look for this, opposing of this position. I do have one question here, as was indicated in the beginning of your instructions. Please provide a situation where you apply the following concepts: diversity, equity, and inclusion. And also provide the outcomes of that situation that you encountered. Thank you.
As I've mentioned, I'm currently elected official. I sit on the Metropolitan Community College Board of Governors, where I've sat for twenty-four years. Metro is the most diverse educational institution in the region. Thirty-five percent of our students are minority. Of our nearly one thousand full-time employees, twenty-nine percent, or nearly twenty-nine percent of them are minorities. We hired a diversity officer. I, I think our first diversity officer we hired when we created the position was back in two thousand two or two thousand one. And for an organization like Metro, that's a global policy. It has to be ingrained in the fabric of the institution. It, it's, it's just not hiring. It's every aspect of procurement. It's every contract you go out and let out. But you have, but it has to be practiced from the, from, from the top down, from the bottom up. It has to be who you are. And on, on the board, we, we helped develop and approve that policy. We helped push for the funding to create that diversity officer position. And so those early efforts and continue to manage it and to promote it and to implement it on a daily basis, we see the fruit that we've bared just by our numbers. You know, thirty-five percent of our students are minority, that's huge. Like I said, you won't find another educational institution in the region that comes close to that.
Thank you. Mr. Begley?
Thanks, Mr. President. Good morning, Mr. Hug. Considering the issues that can be influenced by city government, what do you believe are the most important current and future issues in District Four and the city as a whole?
The most important issue in the district today is filling this vacancy. And once that vacancy is filled, it's restoring the confidence in that seat in that district. In my opinion, that's the two most important issues in that district. I have confidence that whether it's me or, or, or one of my peers who ultimately are appointed, I'm confident that with the support of everybody on this board here today, they'll be successful. Beyond that, affordable housing is going to be an issue not only for District Four, but for the entire city, and for that part, for the entire state. Not just today, not just tomorrow, but it's going to be twenty or thirty years. We need to work on a plan to where we can address affordable housing for twenty years, thirty years out. I think there's some things we could do. I think there's some things we could probably do in the short term to help address that. But it's going to require stepping out of the box and looking at things a little differently. Retaining our constituents, retaining our workers in Omaha. We don't want to suffer from brain drain. We don't want to lose our brightest citizens to another city because working conditions are better, they're going to make more money, for whatever reason. So it needs to be important that no matter what we do, that we want to keep the people we have. We want to attract people to Omaha. Omaha needs to be open for business. We need to do what we can do to make Omaha a viable community to attract new businesses, to make the businesses that are here want to expand.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe?
Thank you. As a council member, you would represent District Four, but your votes would affect all citizens of Omaha. Describe how you would balance effectively representing District Four constituents and contributing to policy decisions that affect all Omahas.
Well, in my personal experience serving on a board, what has worked well for me is communicating with my fellow board members, listening to their perspective on issues and how they see the issue being affected by their district in their district. So educating myself, doing the homework, but also communicating with, with my fellow board members.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Thanks, Mr. Hug. Two key council member roles are assisting individual constituents with resolving problems and collaborating with neighborhood associations and other district constituencies to resolve their concerns. Please describe how, one, you would approach assisting constituents with concerns and problems? And then, secondly, how would you effectively engage with neighborhood associations and other district groups while address, to address these issues?
The first thing you have to do is you have to be a good listener. When you're talking to somebody, you have to hear what they're saying, you have to understand the facts, and you cannot be afraid to say, I'm sorry, I, I don't understand. Can you, you know, explain it to me a little deeper? You gotta, you gotta be able to get at the root of the issue. And that's where it starts. I like to document things as much as I can. If I have a phone call with a constituent and they have an issue, I'm probably going to ask them to follow it up with an email to me. Because I'm going to want that documentation, you know, date and time, and in their own words. So I have something I can go back on and reflect and say, okay, I remember this phone call. This is what they talked about. And I anticipate I'd be taking notes in the process. Once you understand what the issue is, then you can help work or resolve that issue. You can figure out, okay, is this a street maintenance issue? Is this, you know, Parks, is, is this, what's the department that mows the weeds? I think that's Parks Department, isn't it? You know, if it's a weed issue, I mean, you just have to get to the root of what the issue is and find a resolution for it. Having served on three different neighborhood associations, I won't say I'm familiar with how they all work, because I'm sure they all work a little bit differently. But I know what does work is being there, showing up, making yourself available, being able to have a dialogue, getting to know the people who are active in each group. And you do that by showing up. It doesn't mean you have to show up at every meeting. But it means you have to make an attempt to show up, be in a meeting, get to know who's the players are in each group. And make sure you're accessible, make sure they have your email address, make sure they got a phone number. You know, encourage them, hey, if you have an issue, please, don't hesitate to give me a call. Just make yourself available.
Thank you. We're doing well on time. We have about, I think, eight or nine minutes left with two more questions. And the next question is, each week's city council agenda contains dozens of items for the city council's consideration. How would you prepare yourself to make well-informed votes on each agenda item?
I would imagine a week before each council meeting, you're probably getting a packet. Is that, is that right? Do I assume my assumption correct? And in that packet, it's probably going to be documentations on each agenda item. It's probably going to be an executive summary. And the first thing I would do is sit down and, and read through that and make sure everything looks straightforward to me. And if I have any concerns, then I would reach out to the appropriate individual, whether it be, you know, a, a department individual, whether it be going to city council staff. And, but through all that whole process, I'm going to be talking to my fellow, fellow city council members. Because Pete, I'm going to want to know what you feel about an agenda item. And if you have an issue on the agenda, or I'm sorry, if you have an issue with an agenda item, I'm going to want to know what that is, and I'm going to want to be able to understand what your issue is with that. Because my issue with an agenda item may not be the same you have. And I may not have an issue with and I may not have an issue with anything on the agenda. But understanding where you're coming from, where Amy's coming from, Juanita's coming from, Mr. Bigley, Mr. Rowe, and Mr. Harding, that would help me be a more informed and well-rounded council member.
Thank you. The last question is from Councilmember Melton.
Yes, thank you. In closing, please discuss why you would be an effective council member representing District Seven. District Four, I'm sorry. I'm District Seven. District Four.
I've been active in a lot of things. I've helped start homeowner associations. I've served as president of three homeowner associations. I'm a small business owner. And I sit on the Metropolitan Community College Board of Governors. I'm sure you're going to get tired of me saying that. But the culmination of all those experiences makes me kind of unique to be a very good council member because I bring so much to the table. Metro Board is not the city council, I will agree. But there's a lot of similarities on how boards function. There are some generics to it. And, you know, I may not, you know, I guess the analogy I would be is the city council, as members, you're running a marathon. And Metro Board, we're doing a slow walk. So at least I have the basics to be, I'm up, I'm walking, you know, I can get up to speed because I've already, I already have that groundwork in place. I grew up in the district. For lack of a better word or better description, we are talking about South Omaha. It's where my great-grandfather and great-grandmother chose to settle down. It's where my grandparents lived and died. It's where my parents grew up. It's where I live today. It's who I am. I mean, I am South Omaha. It's as much part of me as anything else. And I would consider it a huge opportunity to be able to bring my experiences to serve District Four. And I ask each one of you to please select me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. We appreciate the responses to the questions and your interest in the city council.
Good luck. Thank you for your efforts. I know this is not a fun process.
Thank you. And council members, we're on time. If anyone needs a short break like I might, we might do that for a couple of minutes before we capture the next candidate coming down. Be back in just a second. Sorry, apologize for the short break there.
That's all right.
We appreciate you being here today to interview for the District Four council seat. Here's how we'll conduct today's interview, which I think has already been explained to you, but we'll just repeat it for everybody. We are using the structured interview process today. With a structured interview, the council will ask each candidate an identical set of questions. Council members will only ask questions from the structured interview and will not be able to ask any follow-up questions at this time. So you will not have the conversational nature of some interviews right now, but this approach ensures the consistency in the interview and ensures each candidate responds to the same set of questions. The interview consists of eight questions. It is a timed interview, so we'll have a limit of thirty minutes and we'll stick strictly to that timeframe. But I believe you'll find that adequate time to address the questions. So if you're ready to proceed, I'll begin with the first question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. And the first question is, describe your familiarity, involvement, and/or support for some of the major city-involved projects in District Four, along with projects being funded at the state level.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much for that question. Thank you so much for taking this time to even sit and talk with all of us. I am very appreciative of it. And I wanted to start off first by kind of addressing the Omaha World Herald article that came out this morning because I really just want to say that it's unfortunate, you know, that I'm being attacked for my religion and where it is that I choose to go and worship. And, you know, I'm not ashamed to say that I love God and that my Lord and Savior is Jesus Christ. And I believe that that's part of where I get my heart for people and my love for people and wanting to help those who are in need or those that are around me. And so I feel like that's where that comes from. And that's where my heart for people to see projects like what's going on in South Omaha, to get to the question. There's a lot of great things happening in Omaha. There's a lot of great things happening in District Four. There's a lot of opportunity for development to happen in this area, things with the Choice Neighborhood Grants. That's a great opportunity for Southside Terrace and Indian Hills neighborhood to really get revitalization in an area that's part of one of the oldest developments here in the city and in the country. And so I'm really excited to see what happens with that, to make sure that, you know, that all of those residents there are getting communicated with, to make sure that there is open communication, that they know exactly what to expect and where we're at in the process, that there's continual conversation with those residents, that they feel a part of the process. Because at the end of the day, that's why we're doing this development. You know, that's why we were able to get that grant, was to help improve the lives of those that were living in that area. Another great project that I think is going on down in District Four is the Economic Recovery Act and then also which is with LB-1024 and you also have LB-531, which is funding from the state, which I think is great that we were able to, you know, the legislature was able to think about East Omaha over here and really help us with some funding. And so I think with those projects, it's again important that we really have good communication to those small businesses and those nonprofits that are able to apply for that funding and who are eligible for that funding, that they know about it and they know what requirements and what things they need to meet in order to be able to apply and maybe even win some of that funding as well. And so I think that's another program that's really important and can really have a major impact for small businesses and for people who are living here and trying to help better the community, not only in District Four, but also just in South Omaha in general. And then kind of on a smaller level, I think, is a lot of the projects that the South Omaha BID is working on. You know, there are newer Business Improvement Districts here in the city, but they're doing great things like adding signage, you know, which seems so small, but it's such an important way to market and say, "Hey, this is our district and we're proud of it and we want you to come and visit." And so it's little projects like that too, that can just help improve the atmosphere of the district for everyone who lives there and also those that are coming to visit. And so I think there's a lot of great projects and developments happening in Omaha and District Four and I really want to be a part of improving those and making sure that they go smoothly.
Thank you. The next question will be from Councilmember Melton.
Yes, and Ms. Blackburn, as a council member, there are considerable demands of your time. You will receive numerous invitations to neighborhood meetings and other events, often on nights and weekends, as well as full days of council business on Tuesdays. Could you please discuss how you would balance these demands with your personal and professional life while still being responsive to your constituents?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much. This is a great question. So actually, I was a student athlete when I was in college. And so from that, just that point on, I really had to learn how to balance being a student athlete while also taking a full-time course load of classes, while also having an internship at the same time and also volunteering in the community. And so I had to learn, how do I balance the working out three times a day for those practices and then also making sure I get my schoolwork done? And then also making sure that I'm able to handle the commitments of my internship. And so I feel like I'm going to take a lot of those time management skills that I got from when I was in college and when I was doing my master's degree even. And I'm going to bring that over into when I'm sitting on the council as well. And one of those big skills that I learned was organization. You know, really just making sure that I've got a planner, that I'm writing things down, that I'm making notes, you know. Never leave anything up to your memory is one of those things that I like to say, you know. And so people who know me, I love post-it notes. They're all over my office because they're reminders to remember exactly what's going on and so that I don't forget anything. And then two, communication is just following up when you have a lot of different things that you're being pulled on or pulled for. And so just communicating with all of the different parties, whether that's a neighborhood association, whether that's council staff, whether that's with my personal professional job, and just communicating, "Hey, here's what I have going on today." You know, I may not be able to make this meeting or maybe a little bit late. Are we able to shift some things around to make it so that I'm able to attend where I need to be and so that I'm able to get to everyone and am able to participate and really make sure that I'm available and I'm there and present? And so I think making sure that's having clear communication and ensuring that everyone's on the same page and everyone knows what's going on because I think that's important, even for constituents as well when those kind of questions are coming in because that's another thing that you have to consider when you're sitting on the city council. And so making sure that, again, having communication, "Hey, you know, I saw your email about that pot full on your street. I haven't gotten to it yet because I had a meeting this morning, but I'll make sure to get back to you." And so it's just having those communication things. That's going to help be able to balance all of the demands that city council will have as well as what I have going on in my personal life.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Good morning. How are you today, Terry?
I do well.
Good. Thank you for your time and your interest in this position. I do have one question. Please provide a situation where you applied the following concepts, diversity, equity, and inclusion? And then if you wouldn't mind sharing what those outcomes were.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much for the question. I think this is a great question because diversity and inclusion are extremely important. And not even just diversity and inclusion when we're talking about race and when we're talking about gender. You know, I could mention that, you know, I'm the only, the black candidate here. I'm the youngest candidate here, which are things that are important because that brings a different perspective. But at the end of the day, I think what's also really important is to ensure that we have diversity of thought and ensuring that people that are coming from those different perspectives that have different ideas, that may think differently or look at something differently than us, that we're able to bring them to the table and that we're able to actually collaborate and have conversations. Because I think unfortunately right now in the culture, there's just kind of that thought that we can't do that. And so that's one of my things that I do just individually is to work with people who maybe not, may not see things the same way that I do, that may not view things the same way that I do, that have a different perspective, that have a different way of looking at things in life and being able to sit down with them and find the things that we have in common. Again, which is so important. And so I do that on a daily basis with, I am the head coach of a track program. And so I have a lot of different coaches that come from all over the city and all different areas. And so I have to continually work with them to make sure that our program is successful. I work with a youth group as well that is made up of a diverse group of young students from middle school to high school. And so, again, working with them as well to just kind of make sure that, hey, it's okay that we have different thoughts, we have different opinions, we have different ideas. It's being able to, one, clearly communicate those, but then also making sure that we're able to work with those who maybe don't have those same ideas that we do. And so I think that is important and that's something that I continually work on day to day to make sure that we're having those collaborative conversations. And at the end of the day, finding what we do have in common and making sure that we can work on those to get to our ultimate goals and our ultimate solutions.
Thank you. Mr. Bigley.
Thanks. Is that on?
I don't think so.
I'll just, I'll talk loud. Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, yes.
Considering the issues that can be influenced by city government, what do you believe are the most important current and future issues in District Four and the city as a whole?
I thank you so much for that question. I think one of the biggest issues for District Four and really the city as a whole is increasing communication and increasing citizen engagement. Because at the end of the day, city government is here for the residents of Omaha and to ensure that they're able to live their lives and that they don't have to, they can live in their homes safely and be proud to call Omaha their home. And so I think increasing their engagement and participation in city government, making sure that they feel involved, making sure that they feel heard and that they have a council representative who is there and is present to listen and collaborate with them, even, hey, even if there are some things that we may disagree on, that we may not see eye to eye on, knowing that they have a council member that's going to be there and is actually going to listen and work with them and collaborate with them and lock arms with them and say, "Okay, what can we do to get to a solution that's going to help District Four and is also going to help the city of Omaha?" And so I think that is one of the biggest issues for District Four and for the city of Omaha. It's just how do we get the people more involved in what is their government? One of the other big issues that I think for the city of Omaha and for District Four would just be, there's a lot of growth in development, which is great. You know, we love to see Omaha thriving and we love to see it flourishing. But with that, you know, we want to make sure too that we're continuing to maintain all of the different infrastructure that we have and that we're making sure that we're supporting our small business groups. We're making sure that we're supporting and that they have the support that they need from their city council and from their city council members. And so I think making sure that we are working and growing at a great rate and also making sure that we're working with not only developers, but residents to ensure that, you know, that we're able to continue to make Omaha grow and thrive, not only for those of us who are living here right now, but for our kids and for our grandkids, ensuring that they also have in Omaha, that they're going to be proud to say is their home and that they want to stay here and raise their kids and work and set roots down in here.
set roots down in here. And so I think that's the other big issue too, is just making sure that we're continually, um, as we continue to grow and as we continue to have great development and investment here in the city of Omaha, uh, one, making sure that that continues to come in, but two, ensuring that those residents and those developers, that we have great relationships with them and we're able to foster those, those communications between the re- the residents and, and the businesses that are coming in to make sure that they, we have a great Omaha and a city for everybody. And so I think those are the two really big issues is, as far as communication, making sure that we're engaging, engaging the citizens, but then also making sure that we're develop, we're continuing to grow and develop Omaha and to be this flourishing, thriving city that we have today and can, and keeping that for future generations.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, sir. As a council member, you would represent District four, but your votes would affect all citizens of Omaha. Describe how you would balance effectively representing District four constituents and contributing to policy decisions that affect all Omahans.
Yeah, thank, uh, thank you for that question. Um, you know, you're absolutely correct. I think it's sometimes it's so easy for us to get stuck in our, our, our little silos of this is, this is my neighborhood or this is the, the little area that I grew up in and forget that, you know, you're a, a part of a larger city. And so at the end of the day, when we get great things happening in District four, we get great things happening in District six or District one, that that's a win for Omaha. You know, that's a win for all of us. And so it, just reminding people that at the end of the day, we are all part of the same city, I think is important. Um, and so that, that's something that I'm going to take with me, um, if I, I get this appointment would be to, yes, uh, of course, I want to advocate for, for my, my neighborhood and for my district because of course we want to continue to see things grow, we want to continue to see our streets be safe, you know, we want to continue for it to be a great place for people to, to come and to visit and to live. But I also want to remind people that when there's developments happening in other areas of the city, that's also good too. Um, and so it, to remember, to remind people that even though we live in different areas of the city and may see things a little bit differently, a lot of us annoyingly may be going through some of the same, have some of the same issues and same concerns and want some of the same things from their city. And when we work together and we kind of start to talk to each other and realize, oh, they're not so different than me, then we can kind of come together and really realize, again, Omaha are one city and that, I think that's the important thing to remember.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Blackburn.
Good morning.
Two, uh, two key council member roles are assisting individual constituents with resolving problems and collaborating with neighborhood associations, BIDs, and other district constituencies to resolve their concerns. Please describe how you would, one, approach assisting constituents with those concerns and problems and, two, how would you effectively engage with neighborhood associations and other district groups to address those issues?
Thank, that's a great question, um, and it's one of those things I keep, I continually touch on, but it's again so important because at the end of the day, city government, we're here for the constituents. That, that's who we're here for, that's who we're trying to help sure, make sure that they have, uh, they're able to live their lives in peace and that they're able to walk the streets safely with their kids and enjoy Omaha. And so when they have concerns, when they have issues, I think it's important to be responsive and to have open lines of communication, ensuring that you have a council member who is going to be present and who's going to listen to your concerns and listen to your issues, listen to your ideas, if you have ideas for what could make this ci- uh, city better, um, and being able to have open communications, whether that's phone calls, whether that's emails, whether it's having one-on-one meetings and coming up with these groups who are, have an invested interest not only in District four, but in the, the greater city as a whole and wa- working with them and collaborating with them and talking with them. And so one of my big ways of assisting, um, residents with their issues, you know, I used to, uh, to work in the mayor's hotline a little bit too, I used to assist in there. And so I'm used to taking constituent calls and, and really working with not only the constituents, but also working with the city staff to come to a solution and figure out, okay, what can we do? Here's the problem, what are our options here? And so getting people, players and stakeholders in the room, talking together, getting this constituents talking with the city staff and not just me, because at the end of the day, we're all working together to ensure that these problems and these concerns get solved and get resolved and, and, and not only in efficient way, but in an effective way, uh, where the residents feel like, yes, you know, they listened to me and I felt like I got a, a conclusion and a solution that really did benefit me and really helps to better the district. And so I think having those open lines of communication, that, that's important. And then also attending and being present in a lot of those neighborhood association meetings, those are a lot of the people, they're going to see different things in the area, in different areas that I'm not always going to be able to see, I'm one person. Um, and so, and you have a whole district and so being able to, again, talk to those people that are living in those different neighborhoods and being able to communicate and say, hey, what are those issues? What are you seeing on a daily basis that I don't see because I'm not waking up there at six in the morning or I, I'm not going to sleep there at midnight, so I'm not noticing those things because I'm not there, but we, let's communicate and let's talk and, and find out, um, what you're seeing, what are your issues and how can we improve and make it better? And so I think, again, having that, those lines of communication, not only with the constituents and the residents, but also with city staff and bringing those different groups together to work and, and solve and have solutions.
Thank you. We're doing fine on time, we have about, uh, I think eleven or twelve minutes left with two more questions. Uh, and the next question is, each week's city council agenda, uh, contains dozens of items for the council's consideration. How would you prepare yourself to make well-informed votes on each agenda item?
Yeah, um, I, I learned this when I was going through my graduate's, uh, uh, schooling, I was working at the time and I learned, you know, there's going to be a lot of late nights, reading a, reading a lot and doing a lot of research. And so that, that is one of the things I'm going to carry over and that it, it's just going to be a matter of fact of having to go and, and on the weekends, read through council agendas and, and follow up and maybe make some phone calls or send some emails or, and do some research to find out exactly who are these different organizations or who, who are, um, who are these different issues concerning and making sure that we've got, um, input from the, from the community again and making sure I've got thoughts and, and input from the neighborhoods. And so it's going to be a lot of research, it's going to be a lot of reading and it's going to be a lot of time, again, on the ground, talking to people, talking to people in those neighborhoods, talking to the people who those different line items, who it affects and finding out what their thoughts and what their opinions are on those different issues. And so I think that's how I'm going to prepare each week for council meetings, is trying to reach as many people as I can when I see those different issues that say, hey, maybe I'm not as familiar with that, who, who do I know that does have some of those, that insight on the ground in the neighborhood that can give me a little bit more insight about what's going on? Again, it's bringing those people to the table, collaborating, even if we may have a different view, a different perspective, bringing them together and so, and working with others to make sure that when it comes time to vote on Tuesday, I can be confident about what my stance is.
Thank you. The last question will be from Councilmember Milton.
Yes, thanks, Ms. Blackburn. So last question, in closing, please discuss why you would be an effective council member representing District four?
Thank you so much for the question. Um, and honestly, the re- the reason I put my, put my name even in, in for this application was just because, again, my heart for people, I, I, I go back to that because it, it's true. And at the end of the day, like I mentioned at the beginning, that's what city government is here for. And I think that is what's going to really help make me a good city council member is because I, I really do care and I really want to help in any way possible to help make sure that people are able to have a neighborhood, a district, a city where they feel like they, they love where they live, they feel like they can walk down the street with their kids and they can feel safe, they don't have to worry about trying to look over their shoulders, that they feel like they have a place where their kids will grow up and their kids are going to love and want to stay here because there's te- there's lots of job opportunities, that they feel like there's, they're, they're safe, they feel like they love it, they're thriving, that the city is growing and there's a lot of things happening and so they want to stay here. And so that's, I feel like because of my heart for people and my heart to see Omaha continue to grow and my, my, my heart to collaborate and work with those who maybe don't have the same views and opinions as I do and bring people to the table and have open conversations and have open dialogues with people to come to solutions that we can agree on and say, hey, yes, this is going to be what's best to help move District four forward, this is what's going to be best to help move Omaha forward. And so I think those two things, that's what's going to make me a great city council member for, for Omaha and for District four, to really help Omaha continue to thrive, not only for us that are here right now, but for our kids and for our grandkids.
Great, thank you. We appreciate you being here and for answering, uh, the questions today and for your interest in city council.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much.
We'll now have city council staff bringing Mr. Servey on. Welcome.
Hello. Hi.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me.
I'm going to read a statement about how, what we're doing here today that I know has been already explained to you, but we want to do that for everybody's benefit. So we appreciate you being here today to interview for District four. Uh, we, here's how we will conduct today's interview. We're using a structured interview process today. With a structured interview, the council will ask each candidate an identical set of questions. Councilmembers will only ask questions from the structured interview and will not be able to ask any follow-up questions. So we'll not have the conversational nature of some interviews at this time, but this approach ensures consistency in the interviews and ensures each candidate response to the same set of questions. The interview consists of eight questions. It is a timed interview and will stick strictly to the thirty-minute timeframe, but I believe you'll find that's an adequate amount of time to answer the questions. So if you're ready to proceed, I'll begin with the questions.
Let's do it.
All right, great. So the first question is, uh, describe your familiarity, involvement and/or support for some of the major city-involved projects in District four, along with projects being funded at the state level.
Absolutely. Uh, first of all, thank you so much for having this public interview and for taking the time to get to know me a little bit better. I serve on the Latino Economic Development Council on their steering committee and one of the biggest things that they're known for is a grassroots group of South Omaha residents, District four residents, who have applied for state ARPA money to help revitalize South Omaha and District four in the Plaza de la Raza, uh, project, which the city has appropriated five hundred thousand for. And that's something that is very near and dear to my heart. I think that economic development is one of the biggest things that we need for South Omaha, for District four, and I'm very proud to be part of LEDC, uh, with Itzel and, and Armando Salgado and Marcos Mora, who are doing their part to make sure that we bring some tourism, some economic development, some attention to this plaza. So that's one of the projects that I, I'm very supportive of and involved with. Another one is my involvement as vice chair on the board of directors for One World Community Health Centers. And that is another project that through ARPA money and city money is looking to redevelop parts of South Omaha for them to be able to provide more services to the residents of District four, something I'm very, very much in favor of. They're looking to build a mental health facility, which we all know, and I'm sure it goes without saying, is a big issue that needs to be tackled in our city and across the country. One other piece is definitely the Canopy South development. Cesar Garcia, their executive director, is doing a fantastic job and is a friend and is somebody that is putting together and redeveloping that whole Mandan Park, Indian Hills area into something that we can all be proud of. And again, a piece that the city has partnered with US HUD to appropriate some monies and to support that area. So those are three projects that, um, I am either involved with or supportive of, uh, and, um, it's very much needed in District four.
Great, thank you. The next question will be from Councilmember Milton.
Yes, as a council member, there are considerable demands on your time. You will receive numerous invitations to neighborhood meetings and other events, often on nights and weekends, as well as full days of council business on Tuesdays. Could you please discuss how you would balance these demands with your personal and professional life while still being responsive to your constituents?
Absolutely. Um, I have the, the pleasure and the honor of working for Wendy Goldberg, uh, my full-time role at Tri-Fifth Initiative, and she likes to say, if he wants to get something done, go find some busy people. And what she means by that is those that are dedicated and passionate and willing to make the sacrifice, that serving or being on the community demands, um, those are the people you want to find. And in my experience, and I, I'm very, very, very happy that she is so supportive and the board of directors is so supportive of my application here and willing to make the time, uh, to make sure that my Tuesdays are, are open and I'm able to be responsive. So, serving on the Learning Community Council, representing South Omaha previously, I understand that there is a big time commitment, that when it comes to public service, whether it's serving on a committee or responding to constituents or making sure that you're there for every, for every meeting, uh, I understand that it does require a sacrifice and it requires discipline, it requires a real organized calendar to be able to make all the meetings, to understand that where you got to be, when you got to be. At the same time, you got to have that, just a little bit of flexibility, so when that constituent poses you and says, hey, can I get five minutes of your time? You're ready to listen. It's something that I've learned in my community service, in my public service, and something that I would make a priority for not just this council, but for the constituents of District four. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, Eric, um, for your time and your interest in this position. Please provide a situation where you applied the following concepts, diversity, equity, and, and inclusion. And then, uh, if you would illustrate the, uh, outcome of that situation.
Absolutely. So first of all, thank you, Councilwoman Johnson, for asking the question and for this council for asking the question. I think it's very important. We could go into this ideological debate about institutional racism and oppression and such and structural racism and such, but when we talk about equity, diversity, inclusion, we really have to think about how it affects the people on the ground. And when we are cognizant of the need for equity, diversity, inclusion, we make the quality of life better for citizens. A great example of this is just two days ago, uh, I was passing by the city clerk's office and there was a Hispanic couple there and they were talking to the city clerk, uh, and they could not communicate with each other because the couple only knew Spanish. So I immediately stepped in and said, can I help? Which I know it's later on in the questions, I love helping constituents. I said, can I help you in Spanish? And I was able to translate the communication between the, the residents of District four, which they were, and the city clerk's office. And being able to do that, that's a small little thing that when we talk about equity, diversity, inclusion, and, and we get stuck up, up high, we have to remember that we're doing this because it can help improve the quality of life of the people down here. Simple things, I noticed the letter that they had, it wasn't in Spanish, it wasn't translated, a simple thing like that, when we talk about equity, diversity, and inclusion, that we can make sure the city coun- city council can do, would have alleviated their need to come into the office, maybe take time off of work to maybe think, oh, are we in trouble? Small things like that, again, can improve the quality of life. It's important, and, and speaking about equity, diversity, inclusion, it's very important to recognize that District four does have a strong and large Latino population. This council has the opportunity to, uh, to appoint the very first Latino to ever serve on the council and that's an amazing opportunity that would be responsive to the district that that person represents. So thank you for asking the question and I think that's a very pertinent example of why DEI's importance in the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Eric, good morning, thanks for being here today. My question is, considering issues that can be influenced by city government, what do you believe are the most important current and future issu- issues in District four and the city as a whole?
Councilman Bagley, thank you very much for that question. First and foremost, we have to close the one hundred officer gap that's currently existing in the Omaha Police Department. Public safety is one of the most important things that this council is in charge with and closing that gap is something that is a top priority for District four. There are many different ways to go about this, I am glad that the draft budget does include an increase for salaries and compensation for police officers that's drafted and I think that's going to help put us on the map and it would make us the largest, uh, highest paying role in the Midwest in the area for similar-sized, uh, departments. I think that's one step. The other step is to continue to invest intelligently into the public safety divisions, OPD, OFD and such, to be able to retain those officers. So that's one, one piece that is very important for District four is to close that gap. A second one for District four and for the city is continued economic development. It's no secret that District four is landlocked, it's going to take some creative solutions to be able to spur economic development. A big reason why I am so for the LEDC work, the Canopy South work, the One World work, is because they're looking to invest into District four and I would be ve- it would be a high priority for me to see how can we leverage that one-time investment offered by ARPA into more sustainable investments down the road. So that economic development, I think, is, is, is a, is a big one for District four[1778.04] So that economic development, I think, is a, is a, is a big one for District Four and for the whole city. The third one is, and, and I have to be honest here, it's restoring the public trust in this seat. We're under no illusions why we are here in having this interview and having this process. There has been some trust lost with the, with the constituents of District Four. A high priority for me will be to rebuild that trust, whether that's one-on-one meetings, whether that's coffees, open houses, whatever that looks like, making sure I show up to the SONAS, to the, to the South Omaha Neighborhood Alliance meetings and such, and being out there in the community and the community members knowing that, hey, hey, there's Eric, that Councilwoman Servio, and there's Eric. I go talk to him about, hey, here's what's going on right now and right here. So those are three that I think are very important.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you. As a council member, you would represent District Four, but your votes would affect all citizens of Omaha. Describe how you would balance effectively representing District Four constituents and contributing to policy decisions that affect all Omahans.
Councilman Rowe, thank you very much for that question, I think it's a very important one. First of all, a strong District Four means a strong Omaha, and that's very important. Increasing the tax base, for example, through economic developments, where District Four needs more tax receipts for all of Omaha to, to use. I think it, an important piece, and something that I always, always prioritize, are the needs of District Four, but also continuously balancing them against the greater needs of the city. Being able to understand what's important in District Three, what's important in District Two and One and wherever else is part of this process. And what any responsible council person would do was making sure that I'm balancing and leveraging and understanding what the needs are in your district, because when District Four wins and any other district wins, we all win. I think this is a very important question that, that, i- it always seems to be a, a balance, right? And I would bring that balance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harden.
Morning, Eric.
Morning.
Two key council member roles are assisting individual constituents with resolving problems and collaborating with neighborhood associations and other district constituencies to resolve those concerns. Would you please describe how you would, one, approach assisting constituents with concerns and problems? And then, secondly, how would you effectively engage with neighborhood associations and other district groups to address those issues?
Councilman Harden, thank you very much for that question. Like I mentioned earlier, I actually very much love assisting constituents. I spent some time at Nebraska Legislature, working for State Center, representing South Omaha, and one of my key tasks was assisting constituents with what their problems might be. And what I learned there is the biggest thing is to authentically listen to the constituents. A lot of the time, they might not know what the issue is, but they know what's bothering them. And listening and, and doing root cause analysis, asking why, why and why, to understand what they're trying to get to. And then translating that into, okay, what can the city do? Do we need to kick this to the state? Do we, is this a federal problem? Is this, what department would be most served with this, would most serve this constituent? I think a combination of really listening and doing that root cause analysis and then translating that into what we can do is the core of helping constituents and something that I very much enjoy doing. When it comes to the neighborhood associations, it really is showing up where they are. Whether it's Kimra over at Sona and talking to her and letting, asking her what's going on, their meeting is tonight, by the way. Or it's talking to Margot Juarez over at the Buena Vista Neighborhood Association. Or it's talking to Rita or any of the other presidents of neighborhood associations, it's important to have a relationship with them, which I do, and to show up, which I do. And that's something that is step one, building those relationships and showing up. But again, engaging with them, being actually part of, like, for example, the Sona leadership and really listening to the issues that get brought forth through these meetings, because they are very important meetings where the average Joe and Jane can come in and say, here's what I'm seeing in my neighborhood, what can we do to help? What can we do to improve it? So again, that combination of listening to the constituents and also engaging authentically with the neighborhood associations is, I think, a great combination to help the residents of District Four.
Thank you. We're doing fine on time, just so everyone knows, probably about twelve or thirteen minutes left and only two more questions. And the next question is, each week's city council agenda contains dozens of items for the city council's consideration. How would you prepare yourself to make well-informed votes on each agenda item?
Thank you, Councilman Festerston, for that question. It really, this seat requires due diligence. It requires taking the time and doing a good service to the seat, and that means researching the issues. It means understanding what ordinances or licenses or decisions that we have to make, but it also means talking to the department heads. And that's something that I would do, is if there's something with the Parks Department or Public Works or what have you, I would talk to them and get a better thorough understanding of what, why do we need this and how does it affect the residents of Omaha. Another piece is talking with you. And I do intend to be a very collaborative and, and, and relationship builder with those that are on the council now to understand, okay, what's your take on this? What do you think? How is it going to affect the budget? How are we going to work together to make sure that we pass this and it's helping all of Omaha? There's a lot of research, and I understand there would be a big learning curve joining the city council, but I have the time, the energy, the expertise, the experience to be able to take all that on and translate that into some good policy decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last question will be asked by Councilmember Milton.
Thank you, last question. So in closing, please discuss why you would be an effective council member representing District Four.
Thank you, Councilwoman Milton, for that. Back in 2016, I was deployed as a flight medic sergeant with the Nebraska Army National Guard. In Afghanistan, we saw things that I hope nobody ever gets to see. As a flight medic, it was my duty to help those that were in need. And there were a lot of people in need. That was a formative experience for me. That really changed my trajectory in my life. After serving my country, I decided it's time to serve my community. When I returned back to Omaha in 2017, I immediately got involved. I got involved with MILPA, the Metro Young Latino Professionals Association. I got involved with NCAP, the Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership. And on and on and on, I got involved with South Omaha Serving Nonprofits Associations, and I told myself, I'm gonna do my part. You'll have my, my resume in front of you. You see that I am active and I care, and I put the energy, and I get recognized for doing good work for the residents of South Omaha, for the residents of District Four. When I say I'm here to serve and to be an effective council person, I mean it. Not only that, but I am somebody that's committed to making sure that there's continuity with this seat. Somebody that I already am on the record, said it out publicly, that I would run for reelection if appointed to this seat. Continuity is important. Also, like I mentioned earlier, I am not here to throw any ideological grenades. I am idealistic and progressive in my ideals, but I'm pragmatic in my methods. I understand that policy decisions are one step at a time. I'm here to work with you to improve District Four and all of Omaha, and that's something that I truly hope that you believe when I say it. Finally, and like I mentioned earlier, there is a large Latino base in District Four. There is an opportunity here to appoint the first-ever Latino-American councilperson. And that's an awesome opportunity and one not to be dismissed. I understand that in South Omaha, there are a lot of families that have been here for a long time, and they've done a lot of good for South Omaha, for District Four. I stand on the shoulders of giants in many respects. Some of them are behind me right now. I do bring a fresh perspective, a different perspective, but one that is informed by understanding the issues, one that is experienced by putting my work and serving in the many different nonprofits and boards and committees that I serve on. I understand the issues, I would be a collaborative council person, and I would be somebody that brings a lot of energy to this seat. I would be the best person for this job because of all of those reasons, and I humbly ask for your strong consideration for this seat. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here and for answering these questions and for your interest in the city council.
Thank you.
We'll now have staff bring in Ms. Berantos-Patlin as our next interviewee. Welcome. I'll read a little statement about what we're doing here today that I know has already been explained to you, but just to repeat for everyone's benefit. We welcome you here today, we appreciate you being here to interview for District Four. Here's how we'll conduct today's interview. We're using a structured interview process today. With a structured interview, the council will ask each candidate an identical set of questions. Council members will only ask questions from the structured interview and will not be able to ask any follow-up questions at this time. So you will not have the conversational nature of some interviews, but this approach ensures consistency in the interview and ensures each candidate response to the same set of questions. The interview consists of eight questions. It's a timed interview, so we'll be limited to thirty minutes and we'll stick strictly to that, but I believe you'll find that you have an adequate amount of time to address the questions. So if you're ready to proceed, I'll begin with the first question.
Sure.
All right, great. And the first question is, describe your familiarity, involvement, and support for some of the major city-involved projects in District Four, along with projects being funded at the state level.
Well, as, am I, am I free to just kind of expound? In 2003, as I started Burlington Road Neighborhood Association, I did not know that I was going to be involved in so many entities, city, county, state, federally, with different projects and, such as Miguel Keith, Nebraska's Heart for Missing Children, the state, it would be the state DOT Transportation for different things that were going on in Omaha, South Omaha District Four. I think, as they, as, as issues arise, arose, it was contacting them entities for our neighborhood association for South Omaha. And I believe that in, in 2020, we, because of redistricting, South Omaha got, you know, they got a lot bigger. And we have different issues. And at different times, I've worked with counties from Bellevue, and I would have to say the Croc Center, the Miguel Keith, a few of the other places in South Omaha. I had been a part of the, the first and second meetings with them when they were just planning what they were doing in the area. The Forty Second Street, D Street bridges that they're doing now, it's exciting to see. Took me ten years, I did spearhead that. That's, that's kind of, I mean, there's a lot of different things that I had done and worked with different entities, that's all I can say. Right, a, a week ago, I'm sorry, maybe two weeks ago, I worked with the Omaha Police Division with a missing girl that's been missing for, you know, ten years. And that became a, a larger, a larger case, and I gave up my, my file to them, and they were with the FBI, working with them. I'm hoping they find her, I hope to be a part of that, you know, to find her and her baby. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Milton.
Thank you. As council member, there are considerable demands on your time. You will receive numerous invitations to neighborhood meetings and other events, often on nights and weekends, as well of, as full days of council business on Tuesdays. Could you please discuss how you would balance these demands with your personal and professional life while still being responsive to your constituents?
Oh my gosh, I've been doing that for decades. Honestly, having a big family, a large extended family, there's a lot going on here and there. Managing to come up here on Tuesdays and calling different people for, I, I get called for, from, I would say constituents, because I did, you know, have almost three thousand people when I ran against Mr. Palermo. And I felt compelled to be up here and to represent the three thousand. And at different times, you know, coming up here and speaking, and this is very intimidating, you know, to come up here and to do this. And the thing is, is if we have issues that need to be addressed, it's important to be at the meetings and to partake and to be in a voice. As you can see, there's no voice there. And there's so many issues out there that our constituents want help with. And again, I thank you for listening when I called or text, and so I, I will be there, I always have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Ms. Patlin, for your time and your interest in this position. Really appreciate that very much. Please provide a situation where you apply the following concepts: diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then if you would elaborate on the outcome of that situation.
Sure. Prayed about this one a whole lot because everybody sticks these three words, diversity, inclusion, and what was the other one? I didn't write it down. Uh, well, they stick it in a box, and they, they want to say that this just belongs to one group of people. While South Omaha District Four probably has the most diverse race, the economics, the homes go from eighty thousand, you go out west, there's four hundred thousand dollar homes. So we have different perspectives on every different item in the area, housing, parks, everything. When it comes to inclusion, you know, we live in America and one nation under God. And the important thing about that is we have to work together. And I have worked together with a, a lot of different entities with, as a neighborhood founder and president. Little Mexican girl starts a neighborhood association in a Polish area. Now that, that right there, the first meeting, they were, they wanted to know, what are we going to do with all these Mexicans that moved into my area? And yes, St. Stan's area is a Polish, primarily Polish area. And from the very first night of that very first meeting at Burna, I had to come and, and stand up and say, I'm Rebecca Beriantos-Patlin. I didn't use Badiantos, I said Beriantos. And they were shocked that I didn't talk like this. And because they were very offended that, that these, I'm sorry, these Mexicans were moving in. And what I did with, with that is I took them, we, we created Burna, and we worked on neighbors, let's be good neighbors, let's be kind to one another, let's, you know, the good old, the good rule, the golden rule. And by example, you know, it's, I just took one issue at a time that they had, and we worked it out. And we brought it all together, and I think we did a good job during Burna. And, and so I, I believe that that's, we need to look at a bigger picture of diversity. a bigger picture of diversity, um a bigger picture of inclusion. It's not just one little group of people. It's everyone. We live in America. We live in uh neighborhoods that have all these different races and creeds and nationalities. We have to get along. God made us all. We have to get along.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Good morning. I, I can tell you from sitting up here, you don't look intimidated at, at all. You're doing just fine. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
And answering our questions. Mine to you is, considering the issues that can be influenced by city government, what do you believe are the most important current and future issues in District Four and also the city of Omaha as a whole?
Oh my goodness. There are so many issues. And as I see you all taking your positions and you look at all your issues, we have issues in, in South Omaha and District Four West is what I call it. Um, and that's because of the, the gap. We have a huge gap. Um, I honestly believe the CSO, the combine sewer overflow, is a major city problem. And um people are taxed and it's an unfunded mandate, which means, you know, we have to come up with money to fund that. And a lot of that comes from our taxpayers, residents, and um homeowners. And I was on that board uh for the first three years. And, and the thing about that is it's gonna keep going up. And what are we gonna do about it? Or I, I should say, what are you gonna do about it? Because there has to be a, another way. Our, the burden is too high. And every year it goes back up and people are upset about it, but there's nothing really that they can do about it. And so um I would honestly look at different measures to help fund, you know, um I don't know, there's, there's things that I've looked at in, in the, in the budget for this next year. And I could see, I could see some things that would relieve our, our homeowners and um and our residents. That's, it's important. There's other things, um there's the homelessness. I was homeless. I'm gonna let you know that. I was homeless uh twice my mom and dad's homes, uh burnt down. And we slept with our families in our uncle's basement floor. So I know what it's like to not know where you're gonna lay your head. It's, it's big. It's not just in District Four. It's, it's moving. You see homelessness everywhere. We need uh to look at that a lot more. I know the mayor has, I think she's putting in place somebody to handle that. I don't know what that's gonna look like, but I would hope that more people would come to the table to help. Um, it's not just a one uh district problem. It's an Omaha problem. It's a state problem and it's getting bigger and larger as it goes. And so I foresee um because of the and I, I'm, I'm gonna put this out here because I wanna be totally transparent. Um, I see the south border opened. My aunt lives on the south border. She sees people coming in all the time. She has a refrigerator outside and she puts water and food. And it's, it's, people are just coming in more and more. They have nowhere to stay. They lay down anywhere they are tired. And they, they're coming, whether we like it or not. We have to address this problem. And um I don't know how we're gonna do that, but it takes a lot of heads to do that. Takes money. And um it takes time and effort. And it takes a heart, 'cause a lot of people don't have one. And it's just not Hispanics that are coming across that border. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe.
Thank you. Rebecca, as a council member, you would represent District Four, but your votes would affect all citizens of Omaha. Describe how you would balance effectively representing District Four constituents and contributing to policy decisions that affect all Omahans.
Oh my gosh, it's, it's an everyday issue. That's, that's, that's being done every day here. It's being done every time you wake up. You, you, something arises, somebody calls you, somebody texts you, and you have an issue right away. I may not be the one to get, to get that, um, to get that answer. But I may know somebody that does. And working together with um you know, you all, um, all of our resources that we have behind you. Churches, you know, the faith community. I think praying is number one for me. I, I'm a, you know, a woman of faith and I love the Lord. He can see it all. And I ta- I would take that to him first. Take it to you all. And I have, things have arose in District Four. And you all acted and got things accomplished. And we're thankful for that in District Four.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Morning Rebecca.
Morning.
Uh, two key council member roles are assisting individual constituents with resolving problems and collaborating with neighborhood associations and other district constituencies to resolve their concerns. So please describe, one, how you would approach assisting constituents with their concerns and problems. And secondly, how would you effectively engage with the neighborhood associations and other district groups when addressing those issues?
Sure. Um, again, in two thousand three Burlington Road Neighborhood Association was born from taking a walk, a one-block walk. And there was car windows broken out. And knocking on them doors to let them know that these car windows were broken out. It took one person to say, is there a neighborhood association in this area? And I said, I don't know, but I'm gonna find out. And Norita Matt, I don't know if you remember her, she was so valuable in, in helping me create Burlington Road Neighborhood Association. She um walked me through, uh all the way through and, and through that, I um just having different people like Gary Gernant, our neighborhood uh councilman at the time. You know, and a couple, a couple other people that were very, very uh open to um help and teach us what to do, how to do it. We went to South Omaha Neighborhood Alliance. We went to uh Omaha Community Care Council. We, we, we done all that. And it, it, it takes, it does take a little village, like they say. Not just for children, but to raise a neighborhood association up to help people. And neighbor to neighbor, that's the most important thing to do, you know, and um being neighborly, taking that cake over to a new neighbor opens the world to them, you know, both ways. It works both ways. And so um I would honestly continue that. You know, it's, it's been a while. You know, we've been in a part of South Omaha for a long time. But now we have a bigger portion of land. And we need to look at what they have for, for their problems on District Four West. And we need to be good neighbors out there, because we all have problems, but we have the same cities uh services. And we need to make sure that them services are being met for them, not only in South Omaha, but District, I s- I call it District Four East of Ten Street. And so um I wanna be a good neighbor to them too.
Thank you. Just so everyone knows, we have about ten or twelve minutes left, so we're fine on time with just
What's up with that?
Teamwork questions to go?
I thought I had hour.
So the next question is, uh each week's city council agenda contains dozens of items for the council's consideration. How would you prepare yourself to make well-informed, well-informed votes on each agenda item?
Oh my gosh, I have been doing that. Um, I'm proactive. I'm a multitasker. Um, I love people. I love helping. I um if I can't find the answer again, you know, I will get, I'm a conduit. I'll, I'll get them to where they need to go. And um many times I have done that. I've stepped out of the way after I've connected people. Uh, that's the main thing, that we need to always teach people how to, how to speak for themselves, how to connect, you know, and being a conduit. For many, many years, I had all these brothers and sisters and nieces and nephews and I've always been a connector. And so um always been a little fighter, 'cause I have the nine brothers, you know, um. The thing is, is taking each of those items that are on there that pertain to me. I think Mr. Bagley had mentioned I was uh talking about uh some, uh some home in his neighborhood. And it was like, point taken. And, you know, at the same time, I have a heart for that little community because I was a security guard there. But I understand that give and take, it's, it's a give and take game. Um, and working with, you know, uh other members of the community, other members of the, of this board and also members of other uh entities like, you know, Douglas County and the state and higher if needed. Those, those entities may have something to do with what's on the agenda. And so I love research. I research things. I try to find other comparable cities that are, may have the same problem and how they solved it. And I may bring it and, and share that with everyone here. Because why, why reinvent the wheel if it's working well? So that's, I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you. The final question will be asked by Councilmember Milton.
Yes, thanks. So last question. In closing, uh please discuss why you would be an effective council member representing District Four.
I, I love my South Omaha and now it's bigger. Born and raised amidst of the the problems, the solutions, watched it grow. It was beautiful growing up. It was vibrant growing up. And I watched it turn into a ghost town. That was sad to see that growing up. I learned to read in a bus. My, me and my dad were driving, are in a, a bus. I, I read, I learned to read. I, I could look up and it was like that word right there, South Omaha means something to me. And when I see it downtrodden and when I see that something's wrong, I have to do something. Whether I can get, get it fixed myself or find somebody that knows how to do that. Because I want it vibrant again. I'm watching, oh my gosh, all the different nationalities opening all these stores. That is exciting to me. And yes, that brings revenue and it brings revenue to our schools. You know, um as an, as a security guard for Castle, our academy, I was talking and listening to what everybody was talking about. And they said that we don't have we don't have Melishocks, we don't have uh Greensburg, we don't have any of these great big stores, um West Roads, you know. Back then, there was no Oakview. But they said, we don't have any money coming into our schools because we don't have much revenue going on. We have these little um small businesses that are bringing trickling in money. Their businesses, they're putting people to work and it's important that we have jobs and people to work. But the revenue isn't there. The funds aren't there. And it's important that I see people working and creating a, a life and a dream for themselves and their families. I love South Omaha. Like I said, I'm born and raised there. It's not a job I'm looking for. It's not a political thing that I'm, I'm trying to get to. You know, I just, I love South Omaha. I love District Four. And I've worked, I, I know people way out there on the Hundredth and Harrison. You know, and they call me, they call me all the time to say, hey, you know, what's going on? Here's what's happening here. You know, they have just as many things that are wrong out there that we have all, all here. Like broken down sidewalks and grass grown on our streets. We need services. And we need a voice right there to let people know that, you know, we, we need the money to filter in to get things taken care of. We got corn growing in our gutters right now in South Omaha. And this is truth. This is truth. We've got kids walking on dirt roads that have never been tested for lead. I spearheaded the CAG meeting, Community Action Group for Lead Site in Omaha. I spearheaded them to test uh the schools, the parks, the churches, because I wanted where the kids are. I wanted that to be sa- I wanted them to be safe. The elevated blood levels on our kids, six and under, were high. And that's concerning to me. I have over, almost four hundred nieces and nephews, five generations, living in and around South Omaha. Cousins, that includes cousins and everything. So when I say it's important to me, it is important to me. And I, I, I think that the big thing is, is my heart is there. My heart is there because my family is there. And I think that's the biggest thing. Thank you for that. I'm, I can't say anymore.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here and answering these questions and your interest in the city council.
Oh, that's it? Well, did, did I ma- mention that uh all the ones before me, they just kinda stole everything I was telling them?
Thanks. Appreciate you being here.
Guys for, for just giving me this opportunity.
You bet. Thank you. And thank you, councilmembers, for being here too. This will end the special call meeting.